Pledge the flag.
Pledge the flag.
To the republic of the United States, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have the secretary perform a roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Stroop?
Here.
Mr. Stroop?
Present.
Mr. Stroop, body?
Here.
Mr. Stroop, now?
Here.
Mr. Stroop, to us?
Here.
Mr. Stroop?
Here.
I'm sorry, we have to see maybe it's social distancing.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. There you go. All the board members have received the minutes from the July 6th meeting. Could we get a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. Thank you. Okay, this evening, we have an adjourned public hearing for Tarpon Towers II LLC Wireless Communication Facility. Get a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll make that.
I'll second that.
Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, before we go any further here, this is a continuation of a public hearing for Tarpon Towers. The purpose of a public hearing is to accept public comment and important relevant information regarding the project. It is not the function of the planning board to promote or oppose certain project. If it complies with the appropriate sections of the zoning law and applies consistent with all criteria set forth in the zoning law, the planning board has no authority to deny the application. After the applicant's professionals have made their presentations and described the project in its entirety, the hearing will be opened for public comment. Those speaking must identify themselves and state clearly their name and address. All comments are to be directed to the planning board and not the applicant or applicant's professionals. For the sake of expediency, redundant comments will not be entertained but will be acknowledged and be already brought to the attention of the planning board. No cross-talk between the applicant and the public will be allowed during the public hearing and the duration of each individual comment will be limited to three minutes. We will now proceed with the presentation by the applicant's professionals.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Pete Alexander, with partners of the law firm of Cuddy and Fetter. Here on behalf of the applicant. At the end of the last appearance, public hearing, there had been some questions as to specifics as to lighting, noise, and structural design. When we went back over our notes, we realized that we had actually called those things out. We had previously submitted an audiology study. And we also, on one of the sheets of our plans, we had specified, all the specifics for our lighting were provided as were our structural standards. So we submitted an email back to staff and the planning board, basically pointing out where those answers to those questions were previously submitted, and we actually did not submit any new material. We believe that addressed it everything that was left in the record that had been, had been remaining at our last appearance. So we don't have any further presentation at this time.
Okay. All right. Going to go ahead and open up the floor then to public comment. If there's any comment that hasn't been brought up in the past and you wish to speak, please raise your hand.
Okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Campanelli, 1757 Merrick Avenue, Suite 204 Merrick, New York. I'm an attorney, I represent roughly 31 residents. I would ask the board that, I'm uncertain as to what the planned procedure is for the balance of this evening, whether the board intends to close the public hearing. I would appreciate an opportunity to review any additional submissions which have been sent by the applicant. As you are probably aware, I filed a 30-page, 31-page memorandum of opposition prior to the last meeting, pointing out the deficiencies in this applicant's application, especially with regard to a FEDA show specifically where the needs are for this facility, and submitted to you that if, without that data, if this board was to approve the current application, this applicant's probably going to be back before you in six months or a year with another application for a tower because the first one didn't satisfy whatever gap exists. Under the circumstances, I would ask that this evening the public hearing not be closed so that I'm afforded an opportunity to see what additional submissions have been submitted by the applicant. Or at a minimum, if the board decides to close the public hearing tonight, I ask that the record be kept open so I'm afforded an opportunity to review any additional submissions which have been submitted by this applicant and I'm afforded a meaningful opportunity to respond to saying. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, any other comments? Okay. All right, seeing that there's no, oh. Sorry. Go ahead, Dale.
Lubenya, 90 Chelsea Road. We have a volunteer fire department in Chelsea, and I can't begin to tell you how important they are in our community, sir. They respond every day. Structure fires, automobile accidents, something as simple as helping elderly person. They're an integral part of our community, sir. Very important. But the key here is, the key word is volunteer. We know they're taxed to the limit right now, and every year they have a fund and a drive, and we do our part. We contribute what we can because we know how important they are. I guess the point I'm trying to make here is that would, or do they have proper training? In other words, we have a 150, possibly a 170-foot tower that's going up in our community, and God forbid this thing catches on fire or goes ballistic. We don't have town water, sir. We don't have that. Relying on tanker truck getting back there. As we know, we don't have the 750 feet here. We only have 500 feet to our homes. And that's a problem right there. That's mighty close in proximity to our homes, sir. I don't know if they have the proper training, working on a structure fire that large, God forbid. Time is of the essence if that thing goes ballistic and starts showering down sparks on top of our homes. Getting back there in time, sir, time is of the essence. I don't know if they have that training, if they don't have that. God forbid if this goes horribly wrong and the tower does end up in our community, which I hope to God it doesn't. But if it does, I mean, you know, where do we go from there? Are they going to get the proper training? It doesn't make sense, I don't know. Just, just a couple of other things I'd like to touch bases on. Also, there is a letter from Cuddy and Fetter that's dated 7/3/20. Page two says fires on telecommunications towers of any kind are extremely rare occurrences. That's not true, sir. If you look online, you could see these towers across the United States just burning out of control. It happens. They catch on fire, the equipment is flammable up there. And when you have a tower this close proximity to our homes, hell, anything can happen. Not good. Not good. I guess, I guess that's about it, and I want to thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, yes, woman over here.
Thank you, my name is Carla Springer, I'm at 101 Caroline Drive. One of the homes that is in, that you're, that will be requesting the variance for. I was reviewing the files and the balloon test. I'm not even sure this is the actual balloon, it just looks like a red dot placed on a picture. And I question it because today I, a friend of mine brought a drone over and he flew it up to 150 feet, and then he went to 170 feet because this could possibly go up to 170. None of the areas where it were, it was, it was way higher than what is seen on this. And I'd like to request another balloon test, or I'll bring my friend back with a drone and he can show you all the same places where he went. He sent it up to 150, then he sent it up to 170. None of them looked anything like this. I took a picture, but you can't really see it because it's so far up. But I will pay him to come back and do a drone test for you so you can actually see where the test, where, where, where it actually will be at any point. My question about the tower size itself, have, have you given considerations? Is it true that if he gets, if they are approved, they can just go to 170 feet after they've built it to 150? If the tower is approved and they come in and they, do I get to ask questions and get answers?
We're, we're just collecting information this evening, that's all.
So I'd like to know if, if it is true that if it's approved and they come in at 150 tower, can they really, everybody's been saying they get to just put it up to 170 at any point they want. I'd like to know if that's true.
Yeah, apparently, I, I mean, it sounds like that's in there. We don't have the, it's a federal regulation, we don't have that in front of us.
Okay.
So we're not 100% sure on that.
So can, how?
So I'll just leave that, I'm just going to leave that for now. Okay?
So how will I find out the answer?
I mean, we'll, we'll have that addressed at the end before we, you know, before we make a decision, a final decision on the entire project.
Okay.
Okay?
This has been called a telecommunications structure. It's been called a wireless telecommunications facility. It's been called a cell tower, and it's been called a cell pole. Can anyone here tell me what it is?
It's kind of all, it's kind of all of it. It's, we're not, we're not really, not really here tonight to answer.
Oh, okay.
Dale, question.
So if I could find out that the answer to that?
It's something that you probably want to, you know, contact the zoning office.
Oh, that's a zoning thing?
If you have questions, you know, during their regular business hours, there's staff in the office that can answer your questions. If not, they might be able to get you in touch with other people that will be able to get you the specific answers that you're looking for.
So, but, but you guys don't know what it is?
Well, I mean, it's kind of what all those different things are kind of generic for, you know, for the, you know, cell tower site.
Okay, a cell tower is very different from a cell pole. You know, a pole is just, monopole, right?
As opposed to a, some type of a lattice tower.
Right, so it's definitely a monopole.
Okay, yes.
No doubt about that, okay, great. What is the contract length with, with this, like, when they, what are we signing off on? For 60 years of a contract, 100 years?
We don't get involved, that's just, it just, once it's approved, it's an approved project.
You don't know how many years there are for you to?
It's, the contract is between the property owner and the, the developer.
So if I call the property owner, am I going to get an answer? Or if I ask anybody, I can't ask anybody anything, okay?
That's the applicant's attorney, I mean, you can reach out to them.
Sorry, one more, one more question. Oh, questions we're not answering, okay.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say that the government has determined that 750 feet from a home, from a dwelling is where a tower needs to be placed. Jeannie, our neighbor, is willing to put our family in danger. Not her family, not her horses, but my family in danger. I will have it, if they're going to exceed it by 200 feet closer to my house than the 750 feet it should be at. I will be worrying, we will all be worrying about our safety, and I just want to make sure that you guys understand there's a possibility we could get cancer. We're going to be sitting there every day wondering if we're going to get cancer. The quality of our lives will be affected in a very negative way. And the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood will be diminished, if not completely ruined. So that's all I have to say. I thank you for your time. I would love to do the balloon test anytime, you know, we do it because I feel that it was inadequate. I'd like to please leave my records. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening and thank you for keeping the public hearing open so that you can better appreciate what our concerns are. I'm grateful. My name is Denise Bamburin, I'm at 86 Chelsea Road, and I take great offense to the fact that the applicant found no other historic structures conveniently near the farm and apparently overlooked my 1840 dairy farm with a historic brick barn and slate roof that we've worked very hard to retain its rural character, as well as the approximately five acres that we own. So I do live on a historic property that immediately adjoins this property, and my property value will be impacted significantly. I just really had, I guess, four points that I wanted to make tonight. I do think it's kind of a little bit of purposeful subterfuge on behalf of the applicant to even call this a Castle Point project in a hope of painting this as a project that will appear on the VA Center grounds because it will not. It is appearing in the heart of the hamlet of Chelsea, so to call it Castle Point kind of makes you think it's going to be near the Castle Point Water Tower or near the Castle Point Hospital. That is a complete, sorry, a complete misnomer, and I'm not really sure why they chose to do that except if for nefarious purposes to not make it seem as though it was the Chelsea Tower that they're proposing. So I do want to call your attention to that. I want you to know that the owner of the property has told a lot of neighbors in the neighborhood that if she has not given her cellphone tower, that she will sell her property out and will have to live with condos in our backyard. And I have to honestly say, in terms of visual impact on our homes and the lay of the land, I think the visual impact would be significantly less if you were to approve a residential housing subdivision there. But for her to say it's an either-or proposition, I think, is inherently unfair and has left a lot of neighbors, you know, again, equally upset that this is being proposed for our backyard when it doesn't really impact her. She pays a significant, this is point number three, she pays a significantly reduced property tax rate due to her agricultural status. Significant. I believe the last time that I checked the record, she's paying less than $5,000 in property taxes to the town of Wappinger. When you look at the faces of the people here, we are combined paying tens of thousands of dollars. I pay about $12,000 in property taxes on my home alone, and there are all the homes behind us, 31 people who joined us on our submission to you. Tens of thousands of tax-paying citizens who have said to you, her ability to impact our property value is inherently unfair and you should not approve this. She is the only person who stands to benefit from this, and she stands to do so at a distance, as was mentioned before, that does not impact her property value as much as it does ours. And then finally, my fourth point, I just, I want to state the obvious. Planning regulations and zones and boards like yours exist for the very purpose of preserving quality of life and ensuring that ours is a town of which we are proud, a Hudson River Valley Greenway community, to preserve that local aesthetic and that quality of life that I hope you're as proud of as I am as proud of. All the people in this audience are asking you to do is to follow your own planning regulations and to reject, to decline a proposal for something that is not currently allowed in our own town planning provisions. There's a reason why it's not allowed, because it will significantly impact our property values, our quality of life, and in fact, our entire town's reputation. We're going to take one of the most scenic untouched places in the town of Wappinger, and we're about to make it look like something in the middle of a commercial, or worse, an industrial zone. And it's inherently unfair to all the people who sit behind me and everybody who has been faithfully paying their taxes in the town of Wappinger. So again, I thank you for keeping the public hearing open. We're, we're grateful for the chance to have our voices heard.
Okay, welcome, thank you for your comments. Okay, is there any, this gentleman all the way in the back with the black mask?
Just two quick, two quick points. I believe in one of the Zoom meetings, there was a. Oh, Donald Bowles, 94 Chelsea Road. My property borders on a horse farm.
Okay.
In one of the prior Zoom meetings, it was said that there was a second balloon test done for Stony Kill to ensure that it wasn't, the tower would not visually impair Stony Kill. And when I asked the question, I got some type of double talk saying it had to be, there was some FCC regulations why it had to be done, which I think is just BS. Because if that tower was not possibly seen as Stony Kill, there would never have been a second balloon test. And I just asked that the same consideration that was given to Stony Kill, not to be able to see that tower, give, given to the same, to our, us residents. Number two, and to, to build on what Denise just said, if, if it's one or the other, if this tower is built or they're going to put in subdivisions for residential housing, and as she said, she probably would rather have residential housing, the town should be aware. It'd be a big raise in taxes for you.
Okay. Anybody, gentleman over here in a white shirt?
John Bohanik, 16 Booth Boulevard. My property backs up onto the applicant's property. First off, I'd like to thank you all for continuing this public discussion. I was able to attend some of the Zoom, Zoom meetings, but not the last in-person meeting. I would just like to put a face to the memorandum in opposition or another face to that memorandum in opposition and explain what the zoning code means to me and my family and upholding the integrity of it. My wife and I have now lived at 16 Booth for two years now. We moved here under some pretty unfortunate circumstances. My father had passed away unexpectedly. We lived in Peekskill, and my mom could no longer afford to live in the house she did. My wife and I decided to sell our home and look for a mother-daughter home, and it was a trying time. And we wanted to find a community where my mom could find peace, where we could re-establish ourselves and live the rest of our lives. And when we first turned onto Chelsea Road and then onto Booth, we both got the feeling that this could be it, that this home could be that perfect place we were looking for in that trying time. In two years, we have met neighbors that have just reaffirmed our decision as being the correct one. We have met neighbors like us who are just middle-class, hard-working folks. My wife and I are teachers, and our neighbors have made the Chelsea community great, right? It's their work they put into their homes, their properties within the zoning code over 20, 25 years. My wife and I would like to do the same. We need this zoning code. It allows, these regulations simply allow for residents to either make it or not, to build their community or not. But the fact that we're fighting for the health and safety of our families right now and our economic futures, and we're not talking about this pandemic, is incredibly frustrating. However, unlike this pandemic, there's actually a solution right in front of us, right? It's our local government, it's our planning board, it's our zoning board. We just need you to be able to say no, like the memorandum in opposition lays out that you have the ability to do so, so we can continue to build our communities. My neighbors have told me how they survived tornadoes, what it was like in, in the recession up here, IBM closing, they've been through it all, and they can get through this time. They could use a little help by just allowing them to continue to make Chelsea this wonderful hamlet of the town of Wappinger. Thank you again for your time, and I've also come to really appreciate the work you all do just watching through the Zoom meetings since the springtime. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Chris Park, I live at 86 Chelsea Road. As I stated the last time, I've been in your shoes. I know these are tough decisions that you have to make, but you can say no. And don't be afraid to say no. Our attorney, our very capable attorney, laid out the case for you on how, on the reasons why you can say no in this specific case. Recently, my wife and I were driving up the thruway, and we saw the cell towers. As you drive up the thruway, you can kind of see them lined up, and we were getting frustrated looking at them and sad looking at them, thinking that this could actually be in our backyard, literally, our backyard. You know, for us, it's not about money. For the folks of Tarkon, it's about money. They're not here because they care about this community or the quality of life in this community. The, for the property owner, it's about money. It's not about quality of life for her either, and for Verizon. It's certainly about money for Verizon. They don't care about the community and the neighbors. So again, for us, it's about our quality of life. We, we are all neighbors here, we are your neighbors. We all live in this community together, so please do the right thing. You can use the, the, all the information that our attorney gave to you as the reasons to say no and think about us who live in this community and have to, will have to live with this 150 to 170-foot cell tower there. And it's just, you know, and I really believe you know, it's not the right place for, for this tower. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Oh, there was a woman over, the woman here in the black? Yes, if you want to come on up? Yes, you.
Hi again, Korea Harrison, 106 Caroline Drive East. I know you said, don't, if there's anything new, I just, I just want to say that I cannot get past the fact that one person, one person in the neighborhood is going to benefit, a company is going to benefit, and the rest of us are all going to suffer. And I don't know how, I just don't know how to rationalize that, and I'm hoping that you will support us and, and help us not let that happen because there is no gain for any of us, no gain. Like, this weekend, we spent time out in the yard, we had a really nice weekend outside. We did so much work around our house. Every single person that's sitting here today with us keeps their house up. They care about our family, they're like, we spend time at home, we really do. We don't, I mean, the pandemic's here, it's impacted us a lot, but we typically spend time at home. So I'm just asking you again to please consider the rest of us that aren't having any gain at all. We didn't ask for this, and we, we just don't want to see it happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Okay. All right. Huh? Yeah, okay, come on up.
Seth, Landhold's 110 East Caroline Drive. I know it sounds, it's pretty repetitive, you all, all the points that you've heard about the health risk, the property values, and the aesthetics of our property. But I just, real quick, I just want you to put yourselves in our shoes, say, how would you react if your neighbor said to you, did you hear about the cell tower that was going to be put in 500 feet from your house, in your backyard? I'm sure nobody would enjoy that, nobody would appreciate that. So I just need you to really think about, put yourselves in our shoes, and ask yourself that question. How would you feel about that? So, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet?
I just forgot one thing.
All right.
I can speak here. I can speak right from here, you know, if I have that down, I just.
No, no, you got to come up to the, you have to come up to the microphone.
Yeah.
I was searching for different areas that would be good for a cell tower, and I sent two, two, two options for you guys to take a quick look at.
And we, we did, we received your email, but unfortunately, it's not for the board to make a decision on where the tower goes. All we're here to do is to act on the application at hand. So it's just the one location. We can't tell the applicant, hey, listen, go down the road or go, you know, somewhere else. We're just only dealing with the application at hand right now.
Thank you, Korea.
All right, you're welcome. Yes, the gentleman in the white shirt.
Rick Harrison, 506 Caroline Drive East. My wife was just speaking before. You guys already have the tools to deny this. That's all we're doing is asking you to do it. You, you put all this zoning in place, you know what to do. So we're just asking you to do it. Please protect us. I've been in your shoes.
I've been in your shoes, don't be afraid, you're not going to be hurt by this. Just do what you're supposed to do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other comment? Okay. At this point in time, I think we've pretty much received a lot of comment regarding this project. Get a motion to.
Just want to clarify, there's nobody else in the other room, right?
Oh, sorry. So everybody that's here tonight's in the room? Okay. All right. So I guess at this point in time, I have to, I guess we'll go for a vote to close the public hearing. If we get a motion.
Do we have to close it?
Huh?
Do we have to close the public hearing?
Well, if we adjourn it, we're just going to keep going. We'd set, we'd have to set it for another date, and we're going to go, you know, forward again. We can go ahead and if we close the public hearing, we can discuss with the applicant what concerns we've come from, you know, all this public hearing, and we can move forward from there. So, okay, so we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, all members voted aye. All right. So this time, in regard to the the application, I believe from what we've discussed over the past couple of meetings, we have some issues that it sounds like that we need to still have addressed by the applicant. And I'll kind of touch base on the on the three items that we that we discussed. But our first issue is the visual impact, which is directly in the SECRE document that would need to be approved. Seems like the visual impact, we we've been getting information from the neighbors, looking to get the impact from a closer distance other than the fifteen hundred feet, I believe, which is the closest one that's been submitted. We're looking to get an impact at at five hundred feet from the tower?
There's no, there's, I mean, there's no publicly accessible property within fifteen, within five hundred feet. It's all completely within our property at that location. So back in October, if you remember, gentlemen, we came in in October and November, and we gave you all the proposed locations from which to take photographs. Your planning consultant went over those. He added a bunch of extra locations. The planning board attorney, Mr. Heran, who's also, who's the town attorney that's sitting in right now, as opposed to Mr. Ackerman who's here this evening, added a few other locations. We went to the Zone Board of Appeals and did a meeting before we did our balloon float and gave them an opportunity to have input on it. And we went and did our balloon float on December seventh on public notice to everybody. And you have a PE stamp as to the location, the methodology, that's all been laid out. Your wireless consultant reviewed the the visual report we did, in fact, didn't find anything wanting in in the way we did that. Your planner has had, was was bound to, David didn't, and Sarah had nothing to say previously about it, other than it was the right protocol and the photos were taken from the locations. I'm not really, you know, we gave you some simulations of a tower versus a monopane versus a blue pole as one of the more, one of the members had had asked for. I mean, we've we've quantified the visual effect. And I think what's really also important is the reason why SHIPO and the New York State Department of State have signed off on this from a postal consistency standpoint and from a SHIPO standpoint, is because from the receptors of cultural, scenic, historic, aesthetic, all the receptors, right? That that's what has to be, as opposed to a single-family neighborhood itself. The receptors have been protected by this location, and that's why they've signed off on it. So I'm not really sure what we have to to do. There's nothing, there's nothing left for us to provide as far as information that we're that we're aware of. We've exhausted the well, so to speak, there's nothing left. I mean, and I think it's really important too, because I know Attorney Campanelli is going to come up here and he's going to give you a whole thing about the White Plains case. But the Ramaco case does a beautiful job of explaining why the White Plains decision had, it has been found wanting over the years in same court. Ramaco said, you know, there's a difference between generalized concerns by the public as to health effects, as to visual effects, as to property values effects that are generalized, that are uncredentialed versus studies that have to be submitted by an applicant to substantiate their position, which is what we've we've done here. The record's uncontroverted from an expert testimony standpoint, and that's really important. I know we've had a lot of hearings, but that's really important. Everybody we've had on our team has been credentialed, and the public has had close to a year.
Not close to a year.
Of involvement. This is the, we've had hearings, the first hearing was in the end of March, but the application was submitted in October, the public notice was in December, so it's all right, correct, I stand corrected. It's closer to eight months.
Okay. And well, plus, we lost two months due to COVID because we didn't have any, because we didn't have any meetings.
But they haven't lost the time to put in information to the record since December seventh, when the visual balloon study was done. And you received phone calls at Town Hall inquiring as to what was going on, and they were told that it was in addition to the public notice that was in the paper, the public notice that went to their houses before we did the balloon float, to get that input in then. I I there's, we're, we struggle here because we drove up to the multifamily across the street and took some photos from from there and provided those to you. There was no view out there. Down at the intersection, there was a view. But again, now you're talking about a view that is approximately a quarter, over a tenth of a mile, closer to two to three tenths, maybe even a quarter of a mile away. It's quantified on on the list. You know, as you were saying, why don't we have photos from closer than fifteen hundred feet? Because there aren't any publicly accessible places that aren't at least seven hundred to a thousand feet away.
You could come to my property.
Please, please, the comment, let he's speaking on the floor, all right? There's more public comment.
We don't really have, we don't have the, there, we've quantified the the effect. And and you know, I think it's important, I understand the neighborhood's very upset about the notion of the variance that's being asked for. But there isn't a single property in the area that's available, that's over fifty acres, that wouldn't also need the same variance we're seeking from. And I know we're not seeking the variance from you, but we do need to finish SECRE tonight. And so, you know, that, this is the reason why the shot clock was was enacted. And we've, you know, that a tower needs to be reviewed within a hundred and fifty days. We've given you two extensions of that. We're trying, and we've provided studies. We, you know, we've received memos from our consultants, and we've added back, you know, responded to those. We've been in a process for, since October, and we we've given you every report that you've asked for, and that your consultants have asked for, and your wireless consultant has written three memos, verilating everything we've submitted. So I I understand the public is upset. If it isn't this neighborhood, it's going to be a different neighborhood that's going to come out and be upset. There's always going to be a neighborhood that's upset about this. But that's, this is, this is, this is the technology that has to be deployed. It's a public utility, no different than Central Hudson, as far as the courts are concerned. And we have to provide safe, adequate, reliable service, and this is how we're doing it for Verizon. I'm sorry, I just.
Okay, so I, we understand, so you're not willing to provide us with that? That's fine. The valuation of properties within the area, I mean, we've gotten real estate value evaluation reports from, you know, a lot of places outside the local area that have been affected by cell towers. We are looking for something.
Right, and we've provided you.
You know, from a, you know, again, combined with, you know, somebody with some local knowledge of local real estate. I mean, we have a, you had submitted a report from upstate New York, I forgot exactly which town.
It was out in Rochester. We also, so also were submitted reports from Lane Appraisals that were in the New York, in in the lower New York area, in Westchester, Orange, Rockland.
Right, you're talking about there was the Rye, it was, I believe, Rye and other areas like that.
Correct, and it was also one in front of the Connecticut Sighting Council, which is also, these are all local submissions. The the, and they're also our MAI credentialed and licensed real estate appraisers who've all done it, yes. I I I think, I don't think there necessarily needs to be, every single property doesn't need a site-specific one, when there's a general trend that's been proven in your region.
But a, but a regionally specific report would have been.
We've given you New York and Connecticut. I understand the opposition has given you Kentucky, Alabama, and so forth. Look at the way Kentucky and Alabama have responded to COVID versus the way New York responded to COVID. It it does leave the fact that there's a big regional difference to approach to things. So I I think our evidence is localized, is substantiated by MAI credentialed individuals, and it's not being done on giving, taking, talking to you about New Zealand as one of those studies always references who it was. So I think the evidence is very different, and ours is local. Now, is it solely in town of Woffenjers? No, it's regional. It's New York and Connecticut, it's Orange, it's Westchester, it's Rockland. Lane Appraisals has done a myriad of studies across the region, you know, and 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 if you look and you dig back progressively in the actual Lane appraisal studies, as well as the other study we submitted to you, it's it's many neighborhoods throughout New York and and Connecticut. And and there's been no evidence to controvert that from inside New York and Connecticut submitted.
I respectfully disagree.
We, we've closed the public hearing. Okay? Okay. All right, please. We've closed the public comment. We need to have, we need to have, we're in an orderly meeting here, thank you. Okay. Again, please, thank you.
I know there was a third issue you wanted to discuss.
I mean, and in the last, you know, we kind of touched a little bit on the locations, on the alternate locations that you had submitted. Just refer to the attorney real quick. You you did review that real quick before the meeting. Was there more than just the one location in that report?
There is, I think there was five alternate locations. I know the board had some concern with those locations, whether or not the board wanted to request more additional information with regard to those locations or any other alternate locations.
So that was back in October, our October submission, yeah?
Right. So I guess the issue is, is that there's some general information with regard to, for instance, I believe Castle Point is one of them, that they did not have any interest in pursuing it.
Correct, there was, there was several, there were several unwilling landlords.
You have documentation to support, I think the board's looking for documentation to support your assertion that they're not available.
So that there is, there's, 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 we we submitted in October of twenty nineteen a joint report by our site selection consultant, Nick Smith of Aerosmith, and Michael Crosby, who's our radio frequency design engineer, who also gave you the twenty-five, thirty-page analysis, and a couple other analyses that your wireless consultant reviewed. And they set out in that report, and I happen to have that with me tonight, but basically what he set forth in in from from memory roughly, is that they had a search area ring was issued by Verizon to service the area. They looked at several pop properties, they looked at the multifamily across the street, they looked at the water tank, which which would have been the most obvious for Verizon to to use at the VA. The VA said no, and 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 they swore to it, and they signed that statement. There is their bond, their word, and they signed that statement.
So there's no, right, so there's no documentation from the actual entities?
From the VA? From the VA? No, they also talked to, I think, and Paul, you may have it in front of you, Chelsea Green, I think, they talked to, they talked to about five different property owners. And several of them were unavailable from a landlord perspective, and then the remainders were unavailable from a technology standpoint. And and part of what you have to think about too, is if you get into a piece of property that's completely undeveloped, you have to bring telecom, you have to bring broadband, you have to bring electricity, you have to cut down a lot more trees and build a road to go in there. This is not helicoptered in. So there's also a development aspect, and that raises different visual impacts. And then you have another neighborhood that comes out, no different than this neighborhood. It's it's not their neighborhood, but it's a different neighborhood. So from our perspective and your perspective, it's just a different group of people who come forward saying that they want the technology in their house, particularly if there's an emergency, but they don't want to see it. We can't do this by, through the emperor's new clothes here, folks. And that that's unfortunate, I understand, but that isn't a possibility here. We need the towers. And your wireless consultant has validated that we need a tower here in this area. He validated this was an appropriate location from the standpoint of asking us to look at lower heights, and he's documented that it didn't work. And, you know, obviously, health effects is regulated by the federal government, and he he made us prove that we complied with the federal standard. It's just, you know, we've looked at numerous alternatives, and, you know, we, we've been, the industry's been pushed before to do a phantom site task of, you know, chasing down lots and lots of sites. There was a very famous case in Anticortes out in District Court, out in the District of Washington. And, you know, the court sort of said, there's a point at which there's a rule of reason here as to how many locations can you ask an applicant to look at? And and we looked at them before we even came in here. Again, this goes back to October, you know? We made, and we, and that was submitted with our October submission. So that's been sitting there for a very long time to, you know, ten months later to pick up that issue. I think there's also a little bit of a fairness aspect to this as as well, if you don't mind me saying, you know, that we looked at all these sites, your consultant looked at it, everyone is pretty supposed that this was the right site. Really, if you look at an aerial, it is the biggest property in the area, as we've all all know, and and I'll stand on, you know, the work that they did, rather than being a testifying attorney to you, you know, as to what we submitted in the rep, require our credential of experts.
Okay, I mean, that's your decision. So I mean, at this point, I mean, if the visual, if we're not going to get the the visual aspect addressed, I mean, that would then declare this a positive declaration then for the for the project.
I I would caution you against that, you know, highly. You know, we're at the end of the shot clock here. I, you know, what do you want us to do?
I understand, I understand the shot clock issue. I'm not, again, if that, if that's the choice.
POSDEC, by the way, just so you know, the courts in federal court is very clear, a POSDEC is not an interim decision. We can go straight to federal court on that, on that decision right away. And I don't mean that as a threat, I mean that as, because a lot of municipalities forget that a POSDEC.
Again, again, I'm not, listen, we're not going to debate that here. You've threatened us before on other projects. I'm not worried about where we're going here today. Can I at least speak to my attorney so that I can get his, you know, his thoughts on this before we move forward?
So let me just, let me just say this, is that, you know, the board continues to have a concern with the visual analysis that was done and submitted by the applicant, and I, the board can speak to that. The board would like an expanded visual assessment. They believe that there are gaps in that assessment and that further analysis should be done. It's my understanding that the board is not prepared, although it has directed the planning, the planners to draft a negative declaration, that this board is not comfortable at this time based on the visual impact or the potential impact. You've asked the applicant to submit additional information with regard to the visual analysis. You know, he can rely on the record, which the applicant can rely on the record, which, you know, they appear to be wanting to do. So this board needs to make a determination whether or not they would like to, or if they feel they have enough information with regard to visual impact, they issue a negative declaration with regard to visuals, or whether or not they feel that there is a potential positive impact on environmental from the from the visual aspect of the of the project.
Paul, can I just ask you to address one aspect with your board? Because a positive declaration, no different than a negative declaration, needs a significant substantive basis in writing.
I agree with you.
And and it has to be enunciated, it's not something we can just vote for.
I don't, I don't believe that they intend to issue a positive declaration today, but I don't believe that they're, that they're comfortable issuing a negative declaration today.
I I understand, but I guess, so the next thing that it becomes is whether it's staying in the context of a negative declaration or moving towards the context of a positive declaration. The bottom line is, it has to be an enunciation. And what I'm not clear on is what is the deficiency that, because there's nothing in the record about a deficiency in our visual study. And there's, it's also, I think, going to be a really tough road to hoe when two state agencies who focus on visual impact have already signed off and said, no effect.
From certain locations, and I think that the, that that's not the locations that the board is having, have an issue.
I know, I'm just, you can appreciate the frustration here, is that we did everything right. We came in in the very beginning, and we said, tell us where to study it from. We came in in the very beginning and we said, tell us where to study it from. And there were plenty of bites at the apple on that. And now, at this point, is when we're hearing it. And there's, there's, just as a human aspect, there's a fair amount of frustration on my part trying to understand what, because I kind of feel like I'm on a bus, I'm supposed to get off the bus one stop before you do, but I don't know what stop you're getting off at.
Let me just, you know, let me just, without debating this right here, right now, I think that, you know, the purpose of having the public hearings is to hear the input from the public. I think that, that the public has raised concerns that the board is taking seriously. And part of those concerns have to do with, with the visual, visual impact or potential visual impact and, and concerns with the study that's been provided. I think the chairman has asked for some additional information, some additional work on that visual.
But I'm not sure what that is, what is that?
Well, I think that he indicated that.
We had made mention, you know, we were looking for the visual impact at 500 feet from the tower. How it's, how it's going to be visually, how it's going to be.
Inside our property.
That's fine, yeah, you could do that, they can, they can, they can walk, they could, the person doing it can go.
There is no property within 500 feet of.
Right, but they can walk, they can be on, on the property, you know, on the adjacent, you know, the neighbors that have been complaining, they can walk on the property, on the applicant's property, to the, to the property line, take that picture.
Okay, so I think what should happen is, I think I need in writing, so I don't wind up coming in with those photos and being told those are the wrong photo locations. I need you all to give us something in writing.
I think that's absolutely fair.
By Friday.
I think that's absolutely fair to provide you with something in writing.
Because we got to keep moving towards October 19th, because I'm not sure my client at this late date is, has any interest in extending the shot clock. So if we want to avoid that eventuality, we need to do this fast and we need to have special meetings and so forth. Otherwise it winds up happening, those special meetings happen in my clients. I mean, we just, I need to.
Yeah, please, don't, please, no, no public comment, alright, thank you. So I think that at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just before, I would just open the, you know, open to the board to see if any of the board members had any other comments besides what your comments were. And I think it's appropriate that, that we will provide the applicant with.
The applicant with a list of, with a list of items to address.
Those comments from the board.
Okay, so let's open it up to everybody around the tables here. Let's, anybody have any comments that we need to also address?
I think that study should be done backing up to all the properties, right on their property lines, that that variance or effect within that 500 feet. So if there's five, 10 properties, whatever, within that 500 feet.
There's probably been 500, there's.
That's what we should be, that's what we should be looking at, right up to their property or even on their property if they, you know. Why not have this visual study off, off that, that person's back depth? Because that's what they got to sit and look at. You know, if, if that individual would be willing to allow that.
I'd like to know what the real estate value effect this is going to have on the neighbors and with their property values. Also too, I think that the Chelsea firehouse should be addressed because they had a concern and that if there's any requirements that they need, that they feel that would have to be used if something does happen with this.
So the fire department has given you a memo?
He was here tonight and he had some questions and things he had addressed. And I think we need to look into that as well.
Well, that's, that's new to us because we perceive several members of the.
He was just here and he just spoke.
No, I understand what I'm saying, but you also know that in the record so far, they've also asked to be on our tower. We've offered that to them.
That's fine, but he had other concerns that had come up after.
For emergency response, because they have a deficiency in emergency response.
And he still needs those as well.
We can get, so basically looking for, looking for a letter from the fire district.
To find out what their needs are besides the antenna on his tower.
Piggyback on his comment about the, the real estate, that, that should be done by.
Local appraiser.
Local praiser, who's, you know, who knows this, this area.
Somebody familiar with their.
Not by a praiser.
I agree with that.
So you also have numerous cell towers in your town, you're aware. Already.
We are aware of it.
And you're incapable of fighting those fires already. I mean, it just, it's certain.
That's different fire districts.
It's a separate one, yes, again. Yeah, the town has three separate fire districts, yeah.
There's always mutual aid.
There is, but in this case, this is the closest firehouse to that tower.
But that isn't, by the way, and that also would never merit to be a basis for a positive declaration.
Correct, it isn't, but right now we want to have that addressed as well.
But property values is not a site seeker issue. This fire issue is not a seeker issue. That's, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, is I understand there's site plan issues.
I understand.
We're trying to get, we're trying to get the public's comments addressed. That was the purpose of a public hearing.
I understand that, but, but, but also, the other side of this is we have to get seeker completed. And these aren't seeker issues, because I need seeker completed in order to go to the zoning board of appeals. And.
But the visual impact is a seeker issue.
Not going to disagree with that, but I'm trying, but you're reading it as, but the visual impact is a seeker issue. Has already been addressed.
I'm just raising, I'm just raising the fact that it is an issue. So that's where we are, that's where we are right now.
But Chairman, we need to separate the two.
Can I go?
Because, no, because if you look at questions 18, 19, and 20 of the actual EAF Part Two, when it talks about community character, when it talks about visual, when it talks about consistency with plan, it's all from receptors. So if you actually also look at the DEC's visual guidance as to how to do a visual evaluation, it talks about it needs to be from receptors. And the receptors have been preserved and protected and that's been signed off on by the SHPO and New York State DOS. So the neighborhood concern on the visual, that's not a seeker issue. That's a site plan special permit issue we can discuss, but it really should not be stopping us from moving forward on seeker tonight. There are two different types, you know, it's quality versus quantity type of aspect. There are two different screens here. The seeker screen, it's been handled, we go back to, I don't happen to have a full EAF part, part, you know, questions 18 through 21, which you probably have here. It talks about from what receptor, from what officially designated open space, scenic resource, cultural resource, aesthetic resource. Those have all been determined to be protected by dint of SHPO signing off and DOS signing off. Right, that's the post office down in Chelsea. That's Stony Kill. So I still think the neg deck's an appropriate thing to do tonight. All the issues you're talking about, yes, we can handle them in the next ensuing couple of weeks. As site plan special permit issues, they're not seeker issues. With all due respect, I'm not avoiding addressing them. I'm saying they're not seeker issues. They're land use entitlement issues, they're different. And I really think the neg deck should be done tonight. I've got to say, I'm not disagreeing with us going out and taking a bunch of photos and having them for when they come back to you. We could have special meetings every, whenever you want. My client will send me here to, to finish those special meetings between now and August 19. But there's really no reason for us to get off the cadence we're on if we're providing the materials you're asking for. And it really is important to distinguish, you know, not to sound trite and rendering onto Caesar what is Caesar's, but as far as a seeker issue, the things you're talking about are not seeker issues. They're site plan special permit issues.
Alright, so before we were interrupted, we were going around the table here to get the board members' comments. Okay, I've heard from two, Paul, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to see a property value assessment from somebody local also.
Okay. Alright, we'll go down to the, down to Bob, Rob, do you have any questions?
Is there any kind of official health study that we could get that proves or promotes that this, that this town has cancer?
Yeah, they did, well, they did, they did meet the standard for the, the federal regulation. That was our attorney, so I don't, I don't know if we have grounds for that specifically. But they, we were informed from our consultant. But that's, that is a good, a good question. Anything else? I mean, obviously I know you had earlier the same concerns with the board with the, you know, just the value and the visual also, so. Also be, that's definitely going to be addressed. Okay, Nick?
Oh, well, in addition to the one, the issues already raised, I also was concerned about the character of the neighborhood. Being affected because of this, the bucalic nature of this particular neighborhood. Something that's 170 feet, 150 feet, does have a, in my opinion, would have a drastic impact on that particular neighborhood.
Okay, Robert?
Has the board engaged a telecommunications expert?
Yes, we have, yes, that was the documents that you saw from Mr. Fishman, Douglas Fishman. Okay. Alright. Alright, so I mean, at this, I mean, I don't think that we were prepared, I mean, after discussion, I don't think that we're prepared to vote on this.
I really feel like I just got flip flopped.
I mean, I could, I could.
You left the last meeting and you directed staff to do a neg deck.
We did direct, we did direct staff and we did have discussion over a two week period and it did raise some concerns.
No one contacted me, other than to tell me that the police officer wouldn't be in the room tonight to send me the agenda. It's just, you can appreciate, you don't have to appreciate where I'm sitting, I'm not asking you to. But that is where my frustration's coming from. We were here, it was going all in one direction. I haven't gotten up to refute every single item line by line of, of, you know. At the end of the day, we were assailed with somehow, you know, the sneakiness of some of the comments and the ad hominem's about our property owner. I didn't get up here and get into all of that. Because on a big picture, it was as simple as this. Verizon is our tenant. Verizon's engineers submitted a report showing their need. Your consultant said, I'd like to know if it can be lowered. We submitted another report showing that it couldn't go lower, particularly with Beacon Mountain Site going offline. He issued another report, he also said, well, by the way, I need some more information on how you're complying with the health effects under the, under the MP of OT 65 standard. We submitted that, he issued three memos saying everything was fine. As far as an alternative location, to, you know, to have that come up after we came in, we've been at it for this long, there's just, there's, there's a frustration aspect of try. I understand you're trying to do what you're trying, what you're, you're trying to do. But numerous alternatives were looked at and ruled out by the property owners. We can't do anything about it. The heights aren't different. The visual was done based upon input from all of you and the ZPA and your consultants. And we did another float for Stony Kill because they pursued to the 106 review under NEPA through the FCC that's ongoing because of state and federal permitting that is part of this process. And that, it was asked for and we provided that as a courtesy to you all. This is the first time I'm hearing anything. And it was back in May that we submitted the information on the Monopole versus Monopine. We've had three hearings since then, it's just, I understand you want the material, but that's why I come back to the intellectual separation between the land use permits and seeker. When you look at the Part Two questions of seeker and you look at the individual bullets underneath all of them, we meet and are warranted and are titled to a neg deck. The questions you're talking about, so the Arundacot Court's court case is very clear, as is the seeker handbook, and this was all in my May 29th letter, so it's not new information. It was in a footnote. They're both very clear. Property values and diminution in property values is not a seeker issue. Both state court and federal court and the seeker handbook has said that. So while you're still concerned about that and we may provide you with a localized appraisal report, it's not a seeker issue. The visual impact is only a seeker issue to the extent that there's a receptor in a codified code adopted by the town that's being affected. There isn't one. Okay, and then, let me just look back at my notes. Those are the two reasons you said. And the master plan doesn't say anything about this, you know. So there's nothing to rely on, it doesn't. It doesn't say anything about this, and by the way.
It's in the code, it's in our town code.
It's not in the master plan, which is, which is what that question has to deal with character of community about. Again, it has to be a codified document. It can't just be a generalized, you know, the courts are very clear, whether it's federal court or state court. The WMEOK case, which was a cell tower case up in Hyde Park. You can't just have generalized concerns controver or undermine those of experts. It just doesn't, that's not the way the court's going to recognize it. And we've submitted all of our expert reports, which are uncontroverted. And I'm asking you to adopt a negative declaration tonight. And the other issues, yes. You know, we will address them between negative declaration and you taking final action. That's all we're asking for is the negative declaration, we've substantiated it. The draft is very clear as to how thoroughly we've substantiated our entitlement to a negative declaration. There's separate issues.
I mean, it sounds like, I mean, we're on a standoff at this point. I mean, we're asking for information, you say, okay, well, you know, I won't do it unless, you know, you sign off tonight. I mean, it's not, we're not looking at, you know, we're, we're looking for more information to educate ourselves.
It's the equivalent of you asking me to validate the variance standard. I'm not in front of the zoning board of appeals. The issues you're talking about are not seeker issues, they're site plan issues. Completely agree, they're site plan issues. We'll discuss them gladly at site plan, I'm asking for my negative declaration, to which we're entitled to this evening.
Mr. Chairman, just, just, you know, I think that the board's concern is that there are gaps in the visual assessment that does affect seeker, they're not prepared to issue a negative declaration at this point. This is a matter that is highly contentious, which is part of the seeker review process and they've asked for additional information. And they're, you know, I think, you know, we can send you, we can send you a memo on what the actual, you know, views of the board are and what they're looking for. I just don't, you know, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I just don't see the board adopting a negative declaration.
Yeah, I, I said, that's from our feeling, from my feeling, from what I've discussed with the board earlier, that we feel that we're not in a position to vote on the application. I mean, I could put it to a vote, the, the secret document was played there, but I, I see it as going down. It's going to get voted down. If you want, if you want us to.
It's frustrating too, when, because, because the last, when we came up here and we were up against the first 150 days in the neg deck of the shot clock. You asked for an extension of the shot clock, we offered it to you, and then you immediately scheduled the public hearing for outside that first extension of the shot clock on July 6th instead of you, the shot, it was May and then you pushed it 45 days. It's just, we're, what's going to be.
We were going through, we were going through some awkward times. I mean, it's the COVID with the, the town board canceling the meetings, we didn't have any meetings. We didn't have, for a month and a half, I believe, we didn't have any meetings because we didn't start with the Zoom meetings until, I believe it was May, correct? Yeah, so we didn't start having meetings until May. We, we really didn't have any discussion, any public discussion on any project until then.
But the visual study is going to be December 23rd.
I mean, I, I believe that the, the shot clock was extended because of the, because of the COVID situation. I don't think it was, you know.
Now talking about documents that have been in your possession since October and December of 2019. That, that's, that's why I am.
Public hearing.
Yes, and as, and as the public, as places, with the public hearing, you know, with having public hearings in person has raised a lot of questions and information that was provided to the board.
Actually, the same dozen people spoke during all three of the public hearings.
I wish, I, I mean, I.
It's the same dozen people, three of whom live in the same house, one of whom who is a local political activist and their attorney. And two of the others live in the same household, so it actually comes down to about seven households.
And we take, and we take all that into account too.
It's seven households. I'm surrounded, this property's surrounded by several more than that. It's seven households that have spoken.
Okay, and like I said, I don't, I don't know why those people haven't come out, they haven't said anything. So I, I don't know, we don't know. But we know that the information provided to us needs to be addressed. And I'm speaking on behalf, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the board.
Memo that's been received today, I understand we're in a standoff, but I think it's, I have to make a record here at this point. Okay, because it does feel like I'm in, I'm on the cusp of a flip flop where there's no credible evidence to support anything other than a negative declaration. And I'm going to give you photographs of what it's going to look like or could look like from within my property, which is what my property owner's going to see and has signed on to.
If you're taking it from the adjacent, if you're taking it at the property line, it's technically similar to what the property, the adjacent property owner's going to see. And then you're not, it was just to do that in order to not have to worry about them allowing you or not allowing you on their property. So it's actually even closer, the picture's even closer than.
Just hold, one second, Pete, do you happen to have, I'm sorry, putting on the spot, because why would you bring up your. You don't happen to have our.
You don't happen to have our December submission here, just like that? Cause they may have, if we were online, I'd be able to pull that up for you because the visual resource evaluation's on your website and it's on, it's, it's in my documents. I didn't bring the whole file. But we, our December tw- fine, full stop.
You wanna provide, provide this?
We're gonna be here, we're gonna be here, we have a memo by Friday and we're gonna be back here in a week for a special meeting.
We'll try to have that memo to you before Friday, okay? I will, I will personally work with staff to get that addressed and get that out to you as soon as possible.
So I'm supposed to be in front of the Z B A on the twenty-eighth, which is all for naught, if I don't have, I haven't finished seeker?
Well, I, we don't have another meeting before then. With the letter that we owe you, I will have that addressed as soon as possible.
Cause I'm gonna be, given how this is played out, it is gonna be very hard for me to get an additional time extension. So we're gonna have to have a lot of meetings. And, 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 or we're gonna have to have some level of communication.
Okay, I, I, we, we've heard the comment. We understand. All right, that's, it's up to you where you wanna go with it. Okay? But I think that we have, we, we've asked the questions, we need them answered, and then we will move on from there.
And, and just so the record, because the first time we heard any of this at all whatsoever was tonight. I, I, I just have to do my job. I understand, but you and I are in front of each other a lot. I just have to do my job, too.
I understand.
Sorry, that's ugly. Have a great evening.
Okay, you have a good evening also. Thank you. All right. Onto other business this evening. We have a, oh, we have a discussion this evening regarding Wappinger Farms Estates. Is there anyone here for representing Wappinger Farms? Okay, thank you. If anybody needs to, uh, who wants to adjourn from, that'd be a good time. Now, okay. We're good, just keep on going.
We have a minute to take a pee break.
After this?
Yeah. Yeah, do that. You gotta go. So if you want, we, um, it's up to you if you wanna start. I mean, Ralph had to excuse himself for a minute. I don't think if, if you guys wanna come on up and we could start discussing, uh, the Wappinger Farms project.
Good evening, good to see everybody. Hope everybody's all well. We got the resolution. We take no exception. And we have the comments. We take no exception. How's that?
Do you have your data files?
Oh, sorry, Mark Day, Day, DeSocosa.
Derek Day, Day, DeSocosa Engineering.
Okay, um, all right, I guess it's, it's been a while since you guys have been here. And I know the planner did send a, um, a resolution out. Um, but we did have, we did have some open-ended items, um, that are, some of them are kinda pertinent. And I wanna kinda have the engineer address it, cause a lot of those were his issues. Um, so maybe we could turn it over to him, have a little discussion with, uh.
Sure. Um, you know, the biggest item is, there's no, you know, survey data yet for, you know, the plat. I mean, it's, here we are, here we are getting, working towards like final and there's no survey data on any of the lots.
Well, let me respond to that if I could. Uh, we just recently worked out what the issue was gonna be with the lot in the rear. Uh, we did, Brian Franks has the survey. He will prepare the plat. Um, I don't think that's a showstopper. I mean, the plat has always been in Brian's control. I don't know if the board's aware of what happened with the lot in the back. Originally, we were gonna dedicate it. Um, what happened was, uh, it went round and round for a long time as to what we were going to do. We, we actually proposed last month that, uh, we offer that as a non-buildable lot and that the town would take it when they were, when and if they wanted it. So that's, that's what it was, that's what we decided on doing and that was, uh, what was worked out with the town board. So that's why we, meets and bounds, we can prepare, that we can have at any time. Certainly, uh, we're aware of it. It's just that this whole thing got resolved last month.
No, I realize that, cause that's, that's been an ongoing issue. I mean, actually, that's where we kinda left it the last time was, I think, as we were, you know, just as, there was a couple of comments on the engineer's letter. Um, I believe the planner's letter was pretty well satisfied at that last, okay?
Yeah, mostly just, uh, typographical.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, I think we were, it sounded like we were pretty close at that point, but the, the big, the big open-ended item was the, uh, you know, the town board and how they wanted to handle it. I know that, you know, we had discussion earlier with, you know, with the engineer. He was concerned because again, those, those meets and bounds not being on there. Um, and, you know, as a.
Lot number twelve, though, I mean, lot number twelve is really a totally separate.
Correct.
Thing. I mean, we still, I mean, Brian still could have done lots one through, you know, eleven, right?
Well, there was another issue that came up that, uh, the D E C wanted an easement off of, uh, Robinson, off Lot Eight. Uh, they would not tell us what they wanted until they knew what the standing was with the back lot. Um, and I believe I've copied everybody on that and that we were very anxious to get that resolved. And as, uh, we just contacted Lisa Massey, uh, a couple of days ago and told her that the town is, it's, it's intent to take that lot in the future. So that solidified what she wanted for the access easement off Lot Eight. And again, uh, you know, the, the meets and bounds are not, they're not a showstopper. I mean, they're, they're not very difficult to produce. We're certainly not asking you to sign a map. Uh, we, we'll produce those.
Right.
The next admission.
Right, correct. I, I just, I know that we've been getting into a lot of projects where the, you know, the conditions, you know, the list of conditions have become large. You know, they, they keep getting bigger and bigger and then the, the project sits, you know, I'll sign it, you know, for the initial, um, sign-off of the project and then, you know, waiting for the conditions to be met and some of those projects, you know, sit in B's office for, you know, you know, a year, you know, two years, ten years. You know, we've, we've had, you know, we've had a lot of that going on and it kinda, it starts to pile up. Um, you know, and it, it's something that if it's gonna be done, it needs to, you know. Again, I'll, I'll, Pete, you know, give us a, a little guidance on.
I mean, that was pretty much it. I mean, if we, I mean, there's no, there's, I mean, you know, the maps, the maps can't be, can't be signed until we have, you know, the meets and bounds, so I don't know.
Correct.
I mean, I'm not sure why we just can't get, you know, the meets and bounds before we do the resolution, but.
Because I've been waiting for the resolution since the last time we were here. Um, I need the resolution to finalize with the D E C and the Board of Health.
Well, you have preliminary, right? Isn't there?
No, I don't.
Isn't there preliminary on it?
No, Board of Health, a lot of, a lot of times with the projects, the Board of Health is usually a condition of approval. Um, but they need to provide the, uh, you know.
Yeah, I know that the Board of Health is, but.
Yeah.
So I, I can't close out with the D E C until I have, I have seeker closed out.
So we didn't, I mean, this was, this was, uh, like before, you know, my time, but we didn't do like preliminary on this, or?
It had a different owner, but we've never done.
Whoa, guys, no, come on. It's not that far ago. It was in March, we were in here.
No, 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 he's talking, did, did you ever get preliminary for this?
No, never did.
Yeah, cause we, we're kinda putting it both together.
Well, what is the resol- I, I didn't, I didn't bring it with me, I'm sorry.
It's a resolution, okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't bring the proposed, but a lot of times it ends up being both at the same time. It's the preliminary and final being.
It, it is.
Drafted together.
Can we change the resolution to just be for preliminary and then let them resubmit with the meets and bounds?
I mean, we've.
That's customary.
I mean, we've done that. And then he'd come back for another, for another vote for the final subdivision approval. I mean, we could do that if that's, um, it's just basically just amending the document we have at hand.
Yeah, if you're calling it, you know, yeah.
I'd also like to amend it to include his, uh, fifth comment regarding, um, the SWIP, uh, maintenance procedures to be included in the deeds.
Okay.
That should be included.
This was directed over number one, Pete, or is that a sound?
Uh, I don't have my copy with me. I don't know. Who needs, who needs it more than I do at this point? Okay, so, so technically, I mean, we could vote, could we theoretically vote on this without scratching out section five, I guess? The which?
Sarah Brown provided us with.
Yeah, she, on Friday, she said, yeah, yeah. I, I, I did get it. I did read it over the weekend. I just forgot to print it and bring it with me. That was my, cause I don't know if anybody else needed it. But do we, if we can, just asking the questions here now, the, if we strike the section five, which is basically, you know, the planning board hereby grants final subdivision, final subdivision plat approval to the project, which is containing a subdivision resulting in eleven single-family homes, and it goes on to all the individual conditions to get met, if we just vote on it, taking that section off and then any other wordage in here that refers to final subdivision plat, I think that would be acceptable for this evening?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
And then they can resubmit for final.
But, yeah, but at least we can close out with D E C, cause we've.
And you can also.
And you could take care, you could take care of all the other entities that are looking for that preliminary.
Absolutely.
Um, and then we can turn around and, and then we'd have to vote another time on the final, on the final approval.
Absolutely.
Usually, it's just, I guess, it's always been, it sounds like, pushed off to the end. Everything kinda comes down to the end and everything's combined into the one final document, so.
We're fine with that, thank you.
Let's just do. All right. As long as, uh, cause this all goes back to the, to the planner and the attorney. You guys are all good with that?
So I would just, two things, just procedurally, one, obviously you gotta make a determination with regard to seeker first.
Okay.
All right, and then secondly, uh, since the, was the resolution included in the packet?
Well, I believe the seeker is in the.
It's in here.
It's in, it's actually in this, in the preliminary approval.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess, I guess I didn't receive it, so I just wanna make sure that it was surging to the board prior to the meeting.
Why, you wanna take a look at it real quick, just to make sure we're, we're all on the same page, before I make a decision here?
Was there a part, part two that was filled out?
Any A F part two?
Yeah.
Sarah would have sent that in. Uh, Pete, did you receive any A F part two with this? Um, Sarah was responsible for this.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, no, that's right. Yes, I sent that to you. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just on number six, it should, it should be the planning board hereby grant preliminary subdivision plat approval?
Which section was that again?
Uh, paragraph six.
Paragraph six, the final subdivision plat approval shown on Lot Eight, which has been offered in dedication to the town for a walking trail. An application shall be, um, scratch that or change that to?
Well, it should, I think it should read the planning board hereby grants preliminary subdivision plat approval.
Okay.
Project consists of a subdivision resulting in eleven single-family dwelling residential lots and one non-buildable lot, which the applicant proposes to offer dedication to the town for future possible for others. And then part two, final. We want it in the meets and downs, correct?
Uh, yeah.
I believe all of your, uh, comments other than comment number five currently exist in the resolution as conditions.
Okay, other than, other than number five?
Yeah, meets and downs should be included in subdivision plat, special ones provided, unrolling.
And the site distance comment. The health department comment exists somewhere else. And then your fifth comment I would like to draft and add as an amendment.
And conditional approval of the final plat shall expire at a hundred and eighty days. That's, that's for final. So there's no expiration of the preliminary approval, right?
Uh, yes, we still ask for extensions.
A hundred and eighty for preliminary?
Yeah.
Oh, so paragraph seven should read, uh, conditional approval of the.
Preliminary.
Preliminary. Shall expire at a hundred and eighty days. Uh, and if we could just maybe, um, we're gonna sneak in on the engineering's comments here, but maybe on six, if we can add a K requiring a fully ex, fully execution offer of session in favor of the town, um, informant substance, uh, acceptable to the town attorney.
Okay.
That's for final.
So are we gonna leave that section six then?
Uh, yeah, you can leave.
Take out five.
You can leave six, right, we're gonna make.
So we just change it to preliminary approval?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Did we, and you said that, you said that you didn't have my comment five in there?
Yes, your comment five, uh, we will want to draft it as an amendment.
Why don't you just say, uh, why don't you just say comment, comment five of, uh, C P L July sixteenth, twenty twenty letter? Just to make it easy. Address, address comment five of C P L July sixteenth, twenty twenty letter.
And the town lot is Lot Twelve, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
The only problem is on that, as you may know, is the town, well, I don't think an offer of session would have an expiration date, right? Cause there was, this, this is just if it happens, or.
Get filed, it's good forever.
Okay.
That's why I do it off the session.
Okay.
So that doesn't expire. Um, and you've, just for the record, you've received a, a preliminary copy of that and there's no issue, right?
No.
Okay, I haven't received any comment back.
So, 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 um, just a question, on lot, on lot number twelve, so that's gonna be created as a lot, but it's gonna be a non, a non-buildable lot?
Correct.
So it's gonna go sit there, so who's gonna go own it until, until the town?
It'll be by the owner. Right?
By the current owner.
By the current owner.
So I mean, he could just decide not to pay taxes on it, right? I mean, if he wanted to at some point in time, I mean, I guess then it will.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna pay taxes on the non-buildable lot, so I mean, that will devalue it a little bit, but it's, it's not gonna be taxed, is it? You're saying you can lose it by paying taxes?
Yeah, I don't know, right?
You get it back anyway.
Or it can go, it can go into somebody else's hands, but it's still gonna be subject to the offer of session.
Is it? No matter what? Okay. All right.
All right. All right, so that's pretty much all the amendments we need to make. All right, so with all those amendments, um, I guess we can go ahead and make a, somebody wants to make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision approval?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, motion made. Second, who in favor?
I am.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, the last item on the agenda this evening is an architectural review for air gas exterior tank storage.
How you doing? My name's Wayne Nichols from Nichols Builders, and I'm interested in the air gas tonight. Um, I did get a email from you regarding, from Mr. Tompkins regarding the.
Um, I did get a, uh, email from you regarding, from Mr. Tompkins regarding the fire compliance.
A memo from the Fire Prevention Bureau.
Yes.
Yes.
So I, I, um, forwarded the package over to, uh, Brian Satoska, from Dayton and Satoska, and he did a compliance, and I have the results here for you.
Yeah, well, that, we're, we're just here to discuss tonight, I mean, we really weren't prepared for, it seems like there's the, we discussed it a little bit earlier this evening, um, during our workshop, and it seems like there's some, uh, there's, there's other, you know, issues beyond that, I mean, this is a, um, you know, obviously a hazardous, you know, you have, you have hazardous materials on the site, um, and you do have to meet very specific requirements of the, um, New York State Fire Code.
Correct.
So we, the Fire Prevention Bureau recommended you get a, you know, a licensed design professional to review it, and make sure that the project is gonna be, um, you know, meet all those requirements, you know, which would need to be submitted, you know, for approval to the board, probably as well as the building, the par- uh, building department to get a permit to build what you wanted to build. Uh, but also, there, there's also other zoning regulations that I guess that were overlooked too, that, that might need to get addressed in terms of...
But I didn't know you were losing parking spaces.
Yeah, cause you're taking away parking spaces to build this.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, so...
So, um, I, I know, I spoke with that, I, I had actually brought that up to the manager there, Paul Beyond, who couldn't be here today. And, uh, but he says that, you know, realistically, they never fill the parking lot up, uh, you know, even during the busiest periods, you know, so it's, they could afford to lose those two spots, because there were, you know, they have plenty of parking, they never, you know...
I believe it was more than two spots, I believe, we're looking at the plan that was submitted, I believe there was at least four or five spots that were being taken out.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was... I think it was three, is what it, uh, looked like, but, you know, whatever it was, they, they kinda reviewed that, because this was a big, you know, question on my end, but when we looked at it originally going back in April, and, um, you know, they seemed to feel that it wasn't gonna make any difference on their workflow and the amount of people that they have coming through at any given point in time, but I mean, I guess we can, you know...
But, so those are site plan issues, so whether or not the owner feels they don't need them, you still have to comply with the zoning code.
Okay.
So they're gonna have to do an amended site plan.
Gotcha.
They'll have to either show they don't need them, and possibly have to bank spaces if you have the room. But instead of just a wall and changing out a huge tank to small, you know, carry-on tanks, there are a lot of other site plan issues now created by this.
Okay. So, um, what's, moving forward then from here, what, what are you going to require?
We need to have a, from our discussion earlier, we really think we need to have a full...
Full cycle?
Uh, yeah, a full cycle, or an amended site plan application, cause they currently have a site plan, so you're just gonna amend it to change these, and, and the applicant should also address the, you know, the storage on-site, you know, all the hazardous materials, cause I believe, you know, the, the building department's gonna probably require it just to make sure, you know, for compliance with the, um, Fire Code.
Sure.
Cause you do have, you know, it's, you know, not only just what's, you know, going in this, in this new storage area, but it's also on-site, they look at the entire site.
You want to have it all on-site, all the...
Yeah, I, I think you should reach out to, you know, you should probably reach out to the town staff, to the fire inspector, to, you know, the building inspector, just to confirm you need all that information, you know, that they are definitely gonna be looking for that.
Fine.
Yeah, but I, I believe it's gonna be an amended site plan application, it's not just, okay, well, here's a picture of what we're doing, and it's not like we're building a, um, uh, you know, a planter, you know, we're putting a, you know, a planter, putting some outdoor seating outside.
Right, right, right.
You know, it's not, it's not a minimal change, it, you know, in, in terms of this property, it's more, I think it's more, more specific. I think it has, what you're looking to do has more bearing on it than just, uh, you know, changing the facade of the building.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
No problem. Yeah, cause, um, thi- this is kind of a cookie cutter design that air gas uses, I mean, they purchased out the Tech Air franchise, so what, what they wanna do is, is that they basically, you know, they've done this in all their other facilities, they have a centralized filling location that they basically don't wanna have filling on-site, they basically wanna just have tank store there, and then exchange them, and that's, that's basically, so I mean, what they, what we're, they, what they're doing here, they've pretty much done across the country.
Right, right, it's understandable, understandable, but, yeah, they're, they're getting rid of one thing, you know, and they're bringing in, you know, a lot of something else.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, you're, you're, it's not like a one-for-one exchange, in ter- in terms of the, in terms of the inherent fire hazard.
Yeah.
So it's not a, it's not a one-for-one thing, that's why, uh, you need to have a design professional review that.
No problem, so what we'll do then is, is that, um, I, I guess you'll submit something back to me in writing?
Well, we can speak offline, but this is a very tight site, there are other sites may have a lot more room.
Sure.
For what they do.
Okay, no problem. Um, any other issues that, that, you know, that sort of came up?
Uh, I mean, we really didn't, aesthetically, I mean, we really didn't discuss it, um, I mean, I don't know if, I mean, obviously, you know, it's, uh, we're gonna build these things out of large concrete blocks.
Yeah, that's what they wanna do. I mean, I...
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's, you know, it is, you do see it from...
They, they wanted to come to me with used ones, and I said, no, we gotta get to with the...
It's gonna have to look very pleasing to be on Route nine there.
Yeah, we do, you know, you do wanna kinda make it, you know, blend in, I mean, the last go-around, um, when they did replace that building, I mean, they actually, you know, they did a nice job with that building, it actually looks really nice, um, you know, from Route nine, you know, from Smithtown Road, I mean, it was just, you know, it might consider some, you know, some buffering, uh, maybe some plantings or something along, along the side of the, um, you know, where you, where you're gonna see the, uh, those concrete blocks.
Cause the backside has the, has the plant row there right now, the burn on it, and so it would just be the one side that you're saying that fixes, uh...
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I got you, yeah, we got room on that, so we'll figure that into the site...
Right, just have, have, yeah, add that into the site plan, into the amended site plan.
I got you, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, um, anything else that we...
Um, I don't know, are any of, any of you guys have any, anything that you'd like to see specific? Yeah, okay.
So, um, we'll talk, and then, uh, we'll get working on this.
We'll talk tomorrow afternoon.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So I guess we'll do it.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, have a good afternoon.
Okay. Alright, we did, uh, wanna go in, um, let's do this, little executive session to discuss, uh... God? Yeah, how was that, uh, it was, I think, it was to discuss the...
Uh, to legal issues with, in regard to town, county, or...
Legal advice.
Legal advice.
Okay. We could close the door.
Um, no, I think we should leave the room.
Huh? You wanna leave the room?
It's on TV.
Okay.
We're live.
Alright, but we're also gonna include the, we're gonna include Barbara, um, probably also include the engineer and planner also, okay? Alright, so we need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
For legal advice.
What'd you say?
If you want into executive session, you can turn it off.
I think everybody's just, I think everybody wants to do it, just didn't, to, you know, the sec-...
Okay.
We'll go into court, okay, let's...
Who motion, I guess?
Uh, I, I just called for a motion, okay, oh, you guys both did, okay.
Approved.
Ralph, Ralph and, Ralph and Paul, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.